Last.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the October ninth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the University City, City Council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Here. Thank you very much. Before you, you have the agenda of tonight's meeting. Are there any proposed changes to the agenda? Hearing then, is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Mr. Fuller, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. McMahon, is there discussion? Hearing, now all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. I thought based on what has occurred over the past day or so, it would be appropriate to bring at least a few comments, not necessarily on behalf of my colleagues, as I think many people may have different beliefs, so I don't presume to place anyone in the same category. But I would like to say that the murder of innocents is never acceptable. The desecration of corpses is never accessible. The taking of children as hostages is never acceptable. The celebration of murder, especially the murder of civilians, is never acceptable. To excuse or justify war crimes strips both victims and perpetrators of their humanity. So please don't. We pray for the millions of Israelis and Palestinians who are now squarely in harm's way because of yesterday's violence and everything that has led to those acts of violence. You have before you the minutes of the September eleventh, twenty twenty-three meeting. Is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Mr. McMahon, seconded by Mr. Clay, is there discussion? Hearing, now all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. You have before you the twenty, September twenty-sixth study session minutes of expanding outdoor dining. Is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Ms. Klein, seconded by Mr. McMahon. I will abstain from that vote. Motion made and seconded, those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. You have before you the September twenty-sixth public meeting of the city council. Is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Mr. Fuller, seconded by Mr. McMahon. Is there discussion? Hearing, now all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. McMahon.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to nominate Charlene Temple to the Arts and Letters Commission.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Klein, is there a discussion? Hearing, now all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. McMahon.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to nominate Nicole Baumgarten for to be on the Green Practices Commission.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Fuller, is there a discussion? Hearing, now all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Smotherson? Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Fuller, is there a discussion? Hearing, now all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. You will note that we had a number of swearings in of Susan Armstrong, Roger McFarland, and Jane Zini, two of commissions over the past couple of weeks. We'll now move to the citizen participation portion of the agenda. This is the time when citizens have a opportunity to speak to the council. Those folks, if you've just walked in, there are sign up sheets over by the door. When you come to the microphone, please press the bottom button. Introduce yourself with name and address, and each person is limited to five minutes. If you're on a non-agenda item, then we'll we'll have you speak at this time. If you're on an agenda item, we will call you up when that agenda item comes forward. Our first request to speak this evening is from Diana Mastin. Mine is, you're welcome. You got it? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Diana Mastin. I live at thirteen eighteen Mount Olive. And I have some pictures that I want you all to look at. When we had the storm in July, this tree, the go tree fell on these people's house. Anyway, they cut the tree down, but they left the stump and the dead roots. And that's when they did, if you look at the pictures, that don't look right. It's it's messed up. I mean, you all wouldn't want this to be in front of you all's house. But that's just a messed up job, and they didn't do it right. If they were gonna do it right, they should have put some dirt down, then put some sod down there instead of leaving it like that. And I had once before, like I say, I had talked to y'all about the vacant house that on Carlton. You all see where the wires are hanging down in the easement? And like I say, it's still hanging down, and now it's a new piece that's hanging down. And you all make us responsible for the easement to cut the weeds down and like I say, whoever, you know how this wire is hanging down? That's not right. And like I say, the other place is where me and my neighbor are cutting down the grass and the vines from this one particular house, thirteen nineteen Carlton. And they don't care. We are cutting the vines off their fence, and it's growing down into the easement. So like I say, it's not fair. And like I say, it's not fair for them wires to be hanging down like that, but mostly it's not right for it's not right for the way that they laid that stump and dirt back down. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next request to speak on a non-agenda item, I believe, is Frank Olandorf.
Speak, let's move the microphone. Good evening. My name is Frank Olandorf, eighty-one twenty-eight Cornell Court. Got a couple of subjects I'd like to talk to council about. First is neighborhood parks. Think the idea of putting Jack Buck Park, Jack Buckfield and Millar Park is totally out of order. We have nineteen neighborhood parks, and each one is totally under the control of the neighborhood. You don't change anything in a neighborhood park without having a general meeting of the neighbors, consulting with them, and seeing what they want. Whether it's painting pickleball lines in Flynn Park or putting a ball diamond like Jack Buckfield in Millar Park, you don't do that until you consult with the neighbors, their park. Each park is, is, has been designed over the years specifically for that neighborhood. Each one is different, and they're designed specifically to make it difficult for outsiders to get in. You don't see a lot of parking at any of our neighborhood parks. I don't want you in my neighborhood park, and I don't want to interfere in your neighborhood park. So the immediate action is to withdraw any, any, any of the council direction and approval for putting Jack Buck Field in Millar Park. That's gotta be canceled, withdrawn. The plan for neighborhood parks, we do one at a time. The next one in line for renew is Rabie Park. What you should be, what the, what you should be doing is getting together with the residents in the vicinity of Rabie Park and seeing what they want. Their park is next. You all recall Lewis Park, the attention we gave there three, four years ago? It was Lewis Park's turn. The next park is Rabie Park. That's where you should be going to make plans and apply for county funds to do whatever improvements. But the immediate action is to cancel any activity at Millar Park. The second subject, let me know when my time's up. I'd like you to think about playing the piano. Police in annex now. P A I N O, police in annex now. I think the proposed calendar for improvements is totally unacceptable. The city needs to concentrate on putting the police in the building next to us, the annex, four-walled structure. We promised the police in nineteen eighty that that would be the new police station. We've been delayed from bringing that about by side issues, very important issues, like one-stop shop, like improving the Trinity Building, all are important issues. We need to separate them out, take out the police in the annex, build that now. Not in two years from now, not six months from now. Make the changes that are recommended by the consultant you just hired. Moving one facility from the basement to the first floor, changing some aspects within the police annex. That, that our, that engineering and architecture work could be done in thirty days. Put out to bid, police in the annex now. All the other, the trinity building, the one-stop shop, the city hall, the parking, those are all important, but don't delay the police in the annex now while you have the important discussions of these other issues. I'd urge you to cancel Jack Buckfield and devote all your attention to putting the police in the annex now. Later in the agenda, I'd like to speak, for example, on the specifics of the contract with the architect. I think that contract extension should be limited to design the police in the annex. The other half million dollars of architectural work you can do later. Pull out the police in the annex, do it now on a fast track. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the other agenda item, by the way, Mr. Olandorf is on a consent agenda, so there really won't be more speaking at that time. Do you want? The, you've already, you've already spoken on the, I think, the Trivers Agreement, and it's on a consent agenda, so there won't be more, there won't be another opportunity to speak.
There's not an opportunity to speak.
Okay.
Yeah, on the Trivers Extension, I would urge you to extend the contract only to cover the police annex work. Only that. The rest of it, the rest of the work that you're thinking of awarding to Trivers, I I think we should, I think you should open that up for other other firms to submit proposals. Separate out the police annex, get that done now. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes our citizen participation for this section of the agenda. Are there any council comments at this time? If not, we have, we will have a public hearing scheduled this evening. The public hearing is for the liquor license for Colleen's Cookies at seventy-three thirty-seven Forsyth Boulevard. I'll open the hearing at six forty-seven PM. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak on this agenda item?
No.
And by email, I believe you informed us that there were no written comments previously received by you on this or any other agenda item.
Correct.
With that being said, this hearing will be closed at six forty-seven PM. We'll now move forward to the consent agenda. You have items K one, two, three, and four on the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Ms. Klein, seconded by Mr. McMahon, is there a discussion?
Mr. Clay? Thank you, Mayor Crowe. I had a couple of quick questions about a couple of the items. The vehicle purchase, City Manager Rose, and I'm not a gearhead, and we're, we're missing Councilmember Hales in this moment, but it's my understanding that we have not bought this type of vehicle. It has a, we, we are buying a different engine than what we have previously bought in the past. I got a couple of citizens emailing me about that. Can you talk a little bit about that? You can probably tell I'm a little bit out of my element, but I think you may understand where I'm going.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Clay, this is a different vehicle, but I would ask Chief Hampton to come to the podium to respond. I believe that was an issue regarding the availability of the vehicle that we typically purchase, but I'll defer to Chief Hampton.
Good evening. Honorable Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Clay, the vehicles that we're coming across is vehicles that are available that are police rated. This is a police rated charger. We have plenty of other charges that we have, but we have been trying to focus more on the SUV brand of the Fords, the Dodge, whatever, American brands that we can do within a suitable range of our budget. These vehicles are the cheapest vehicles that we can locate specifically within our budget. So this is what we're, we're focused on. They're still police rated, and they're still for police use, and they're available now. A lot of the vendors are trying to lock you in for a, a vehicle that may not materialize for another couple of years. And that's not something that we, we need right now for the community.
Okay, so it's really an availability issue while we have.
It's strictly about the availability issue.
Okay. Couple of, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Chief Hampton. That was my question about the, the vehicle. And I may hit, I may have missed this. I'm moving to the, to the Trivers and Navigate amendment. I may have missed this, but do we have a, within our contract, a thirty-day period or, or something that would allow us out of whatever we do this evening? Is there something, some language in the contract that would allow us to do something different? Should we get some new information?
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Clay, normally these agreements have an out clause, but what occurs is, is that we intend to have Navigate and Triver start right away on the work that is needed to do the redesign for the, for the annex. And I think it's marginally for the, for the Trinity Building. It's primarily for the annex, and associated with that is the one-stop shop. So any work that they, excuse me, conduct prior to us asking for to suspend our, that contract, we would be required to, to pay.
Okay, and I, I asked this question because in, in the, in the City Managers' report, you had sent some previous documentation associated with the comparison of building new versus renovating the, the existing buildings that we have. I think there was some commitment, if I'm not mistaken, that the Director of Finance would provide some numbers in, in today's dollars. Am I remembering that correctly?
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Clay, in September of twenty nineteen, the mayor and council received a report from Trivers, and in that presentation, Trivers identified the cost, did a cost comparison renovation of the annex to building a new building. I don't believe that the cost that was associated with building a, a new building included the land cost that would be necessary at this time because of the belief we would be able to use the old piece Sure Savers property that now is being, being developed. And so what we can do on staff is provide you with a, a straight line, basically CPI adjustment for both the cost for the annex renovation as well as the cost for the new building construction. But that will not change the separation, the, the cost that was in excess that would be needed for the new construction when compared to renovation, because both will be, let's just say, at a three percent CPI increase. So you're increasing both costs at three percent. So the difference really isn't going to change, but it will give you a sense of what the costs are in today's dollars.
Okay.
Mr. Smotherson?
I thank you, Mayor Crowe. I, I just wanted to state for the record that, under the consent agenda, that I don't want my vote to reflect anything about vehicle purchase or liquor license. I didn't ask to have those moved. And, and, and I have to stop by Colleen's Cookies to see why a liquor license is needed, but that's fine with me. I just don't want, I just want to state for the record again that my vote isn't, has no reflection on those first two items. Thank you.
Yes, sorry, Ms. Klein.
I just, I have a question in terms of the Trivers contract. I'm just wondering, you know, based on this idea that the, the bid process won't start until March, is there, is there any flexibility in that timeline, or is that pretty much the way it has to be? Kind of, this is how much time is needed?
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Klein, we are accelerating this project as quickly as we can because we have a an appreciation for what's occurring with interest rates. So we're trying to move it as quickly as we can. And if there's an opportunity to advance it more quickly than what's included in the calendar, certainly that's our intention to do so. But at this point, I believe that we provided you with the, the time period based upon the amount of work that's going to be required for the reasons I, and still trying to advance it as quickly as possible.
Okay, and I just also have a brief comment in terms of the police station. I know that there's been some discussion of costs associated with new, building new and the renovation, and I, I just kind of want to share my perspective. I've talked about this before, but I don't think that we can compare those two prices without considering the cost of not renovating the buildings that have been protected by a, a strong vote of our population in two thousand sixteen. So we have to consider the cost of renovating, the cost of building new, and then the price of not renovating these buildings that are protected from selling or use for other purposes. So in my view, because we had such a strong mandate from the people in our community that these buildings are really important, in my view, part of the cost of all of this is renovating these important buildings and utilizing them. We have a history of utilizing them for public uses, and this is continuing that, that historic use and also responding to the public's mandate that these buildings are important. Thank you.
Okay, we have before us the consent, consent agenda items one through four. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. We'll move forward now to the City Managers' report. Mr. Rose?
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, this item, item L one, asks that you consider a conditional use permit twenty-three dash zero five, a conditional use permit application to allow daycare center in the IC Industrial Commercial District at sixty-five twenty-three Olive Boulevard. We have Dr. Wagner here that will present this item. Dr. Wagner?
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Good evening, everybody. Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers. Mr. Mulligan, yes, the conditional use twenty-three dash zero five is for a, a daycare center, and it is in the industrial commercial district. It was a daycare center up until about six months ago, and there's a daycare center right next to it. So Ms. Malika Johnson, who's here to answer questions, by the way, has applied for to continue the use of a daycare center. Pretty straightforward. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Smotherson?
Thank you. Dr. Wagner, just, just briefly, and I, you know, I just, just tried to understand why it's already a daycare center. Why does it need to be?
Well, it was, the, the use was discontinued, and if it was, if it was in the general commercial district, it's a permitted use, but only because it's in the industrial commercial, so.
Okay, so you answered my question. That was discontinued because it still saves a daycare.
Yeah, and it's, this is a different, a different, different company, as it were, so.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Fuller?
Just a question, if it doesn't come under conditional use permit, educate me. I find it interesting that we do background checks on people applying for liquor license. Does a background check? No offense to Ms. Johnson, but do we do background checks on daycare center personnel? Or is that covered under their state?
I, I'd have.
I have, I have to, my background has been raised, he has to be ready to work the whole, be around here during all the day here.
I understand that. My point is, is that registered with the city anywhere?
I don't believe it is, no.
Honorable Mayor.
It is with the state, though. I'm sorry, Mr. Rose.
Councilmember Fuller, yeah, that's a state requirement, and I would defer to Chief Hampton, but I think I am accurate in that statement.
Those are state requirements that are mandated.
Those are state requirements that are mandated governed by, uh, entities of the state. Uh, so that's something that they take precedence over. Nothing that we've ever been involved in in local, uh, government, local jurisdiction.
But my question is not, i- i- is that do we register, do we have that information that, that certification is, has been registered with the state? Do we have some, some verification from the state that all personnel clarify that?
That, that is not something that the local police department is given, but that is where the follow-up in the oversight that you're referring to, that is still governed by the state entities that do, which, you know, register for that. So specifically, that is something on the follow-up in whatever state agency that she's had to apply with. It's not just the business license of the aspect of it, but it's more of a, uh, just like the St. Louis County Health Department, there's something more regulated strictly for the daycare centers, uh, throughout the state of Missouri.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Fuller, you may want to bring up the applicant and inquire with, uh, the applicant the information that is available that the city can have, especially as it relates to the background check that was conducted by the state.
Correct, correct. Uh, well, I'm actually thinking that Mr. Fuller is just wanting to know, is there a box that we check on the application that says that it's a licensed entity from the state of Missouri, uh, and a background check has occurred?
Well, that's, she, I, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. No, uh, she wouldn't get the, uh, occupancy permit without having all these things, uh, without having the state certification in place. So, uh, just because of that.
That's my answer. Good.
I think that, that's. I think that got, I think that got us to the dance.
Thank you.
Great.
It's a long dance. Thanks. Any, any other questions on this matter? I think we need a motion to approve, if I'm correct. Is there a motion to approve item number L one, the C U P? Motion made by Mr. Fuller. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. McMahon. Is there a discussion or additional questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Uh, we have no unfinished business. We have no, uh, new business as far as resolutions. We have bill number ninety-five twenty-eight. Who would like to introduce? Mr. McMahon. Madam Clerk, may we have the first reading of bill number ninety-five twenty-eight?
Bill nine-five-two-eight, an ordinance authorizing the city of University City, Missouri to participate in the Missouri Fire Firefighters Critical Illness Trust and Pool.
Thank you very much. We have now before us bill number ninety-five twenty-nine. Who would like to introduce? Ms. Klein. Madam Clerk, may we have the first reading of bill number ninety-five twenty-nine?
Bill nine-five-two-nine, an ordinance amending section two-zero-five-point-zero-two-zero of the municipal code of the city of University City, Missouri relating to additions, insertions, delete, deletions and amendments to the International Fire Code two thousand eighteen edition by adding provisions and premises identification for educational group buildings.
Thank you very much. We now have bill before, now have before us bill number ninety-five thirty. Who would like to introduce? Mr. McMahon, thank you very much. May we have the first reading of bill number ninety-five thirty?
Bill nine-five-three-zero, an ordinance amending section four-zero-zero-point-two-one-three-zero and four-zero-zero-point-one-one-four-zero of the municipal code of the city of University City relating to the minimum off-street parking and loading space requirements and minimum lot area requirements for existing elevator apartment buildings in the C C Core Commercial District.
Thank you very much. We'll now move forward with council reports and business. Are there any reports from members of council on this agenda item? Mr. Fuller.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, um, I'm going to address this to pretty much the city and all the council members. Um, we lost a valuable, uh, city stormwater commissioner due to a, a cancer. I just want to send a huge thank you out in the memory of Eric Stein, who was on the stormwater commission, um, from the very beginning, from Councilman Carr through Councilman Cusick and, uh, was handed to me. And he was the, as he liked to say, the technical brains behind our early water system. He lost his, uh, battle with cancer in September. Um, and we had to scramble to get somebody that can do all the readings on all the equipment that we are currently monitoring, the floodwater in conjunction with the fire department. And, um, I think I just want to say through you and other council members, a big thank you for all of his service to his family and particularly his wife Judy and the other stormwater commissioners. He's going to be sorely missed.
Thank you very much for bringing that to our attention. Any other, uh, comments during this section? Uh, hearing none. I don't believe we have any further requests to speak from citizens. So are there any additional council comments this evening? Ma'am, you're raising your hand. Do you? Um, ma'am, normally during citizen comments, the, the council does not, uh, reply back, but I believe that, uh, Dr. Wagner, who's in the back of the room, who spoke just a minute ago, will be the person who can probably get in touch with you. Uh, thank you, but, uh, I believe, I believe if that's what you were saying, uh, I believe Dr. Wagner will be the contact person for you and he's, I think, coming over to you at this time. Any other comments from members of council? Hearing none. Uh, would welcome a motion to go into closed session according to Missouri Vice Statute six-ten-point-zero-two-one, legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving a public governmental body in any confidential privileged communications between that governmental body or its representatives or attorneys. Is there such a motion? Motion made by Mr. Fuller, seconded by Mr. McMahon. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilman Fuller.
Aye.
Councilwoman Smotherson, Councilman Clay.
Aye.
Councilman Klein.
Aye.
Councilman McMahon.
Aye.
Mayor Crowe.
Aye. So we'll be now going into executive session to our clerk this evening. Thank you very much for stepping in on short notice. We appreciate it very much. Uh, got to roll with the punches these days. To all the public, thank.